The hour has come, so welcome everybody to the meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council. If you would please be reminded to turn off or silence your electronic devices, including us. We're always the worst offenders. So if you would please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we humbly come before you tonight thankful for the many blessings you bestow on us. We thank you for our families, our friends, and our wonderful community of Temple Terrace. We thank you also that we live in a country where we can govern ourselves in freedom. May we never take our freedoms for granted, and may we always remember those who gave their lives in the pursuit of liberty. We ask you to open our hearts and minds tonight as we engage in the noble work of public service. May we be ever mindful of the duty entrusted to us by the people we serve. Help us to use our office to advance the common good of all your people and to make our city even more amazing for future generations. We ask all of this in your name, amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Just want to do a quick sound check. As you've noticed, Mrs. Donahue is not here in person tonight, but she's on the phone. Mrs. Donahue, are you still able to hear the meeting okay?
I am, thank you.
Okay, very good then. So the first item on the agenda is a recognition, actually for Mrs. Donahue, for the Florida League of Cities Home Rule Hero Award. We'd really like to pass that item until the next meeting because I'd like Mrs. Donahue to be here in person to receive her award. If that's okay with you, Mrs. Donahue, we'd rather have you be here in person.
Sure.
Okay, great.
Thank you, that's nice of you.
The next item is consideration of the minutes from our September 3rd City Council meeting. If the minutes are acceptable, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, and a nays. The minutes are approved. Next are persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. A three-minute time limit is imposed on all comments from the public. We do ask that speakers come to the podium and state their name and city of residence. During public comment on items not on the agenda, the city manager, Mr. Stevenson, and directors in attendance do make note of these items, and we want to assure all of our citizens that all of your comments are taken seriously and will be followed up upon. I do not have any requests to speak in front of me. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council at this time? I don't see any. So, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance granting a franchise to Peoples Gas Systems Incorporated. I'll open the public hearing, and Mr. Allen Denham from Tico Regional, Tico Regional Manager will explain and provide a brief explanation. Welcome, Mr. Denham. It's always a pleasure to see you, sir.
Likewise, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. As you mentioned, this is the second reading of the ordinance that outlines the agreement for a franchise fee renewal with the city for Peoples Gas. Basically governs the guidelines for our working in the right of way for serving our customers within the city of Temple Terrace. There are about 325 customers that are in Temple Terrace. About two-thirds of those are residential. The agreement itself is a 30-year agreement. We're basically extending a similar agreement from the one that was done in 1990, and this is a new version of that agreement, updated version, that will take us for the next 30 years. It continues with the same franchise fee amount of 6% that will be applied against the gross revenues for the gas customers in the area. Other key components we talked about last time was we're adding transportation customers to that. They were not part of, transportation of gas was not a factor back in 1990. It just came about around 2000, so now those customers that buy their gas through a gas marketer will now also be subject to the franchise fee. So I'm available for any questions you may have or any additional information you can provide.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Denham. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member questions? You hear that too, right? Okay, good. All right, if there are no questions, then I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of ordinance 1496, please.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, granting to Peoples Gas System, a division of Tampa Electric Company, its successors and assigns, a non-exclusive natural gas franchise agreement allowing the use of the public rights of way within the city and setting forth the terms and conditions under which said franchise may be exercised, making findings, providing an effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 1496?
Motion to approve, excuse me, move to approve our ordinance 1496 granting franchise to Peoples Gas Systems.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If seeing none, I'll call, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No nays, the motion passes. Next item is a resolution approving a 3.4% adjustment to solid waste rates for residential and commercial services. Finance Director Lynn Boswell will explain. Welcome, Ms. Boswell.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Section 2288 of the city code provides for an annual adjustment of the city's solid waste not to exceed 4% annually. When we had notified our customers that it was going to be 5%, at that time I had not reviewed that code, and the code says the lower or the lesser amount of either 4% or the CPI, and the lower of the amount is the CPI of 3.4%. The annual adjustments have not been made since fiscal year 2016. The code authorizes the city to adjust the rates based on the US CPI garbage and trash collection series to more accurately reflect the city's cost of providing sanitation services. The US CPI garbage and trash collection series currently reflect an average annual growth of 3.4% this year and 3.5% the prior year. After a review of the city's customer rates and fees for disposal costs by city staff, a rate increase of 3.4% has been recommended and factored into the fiscal year 2021 budget. Effective with the billing cycle after, on or after October 1st, 2020, the solid waste rates will be as follows. An increase of the residential curbside from $26.21 to $27.10 per month. For qualifying senior exemption, residential curbside collection rate from $16.72 to $17.29 per month. Increase in the commercial collection rates based on the trash or garbage cans from $26.21 to $27.10 per month. Increase the commercial container collection rates. I won't read the rest to you. They are all incorporating the 3.4%, and I stand for any questions.
Very good. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member questions for Ms. Boswell? Okay, very good. Then I would entertain a motion approving a 3.4% adjustment to solid waste rates.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? I would like to say one thing to the public. I've said this before, but we may have other people watching who didn't see it before. These funds, this rate increase, has nothing to do with the transition to semi-automated garbage pickup. These are separate accounts, separate buckets of money. This increase is almost completely due to an increase in this disposal fees that we pay when our garbage trucks go to the incinerator to empty. We have, the rates have been, I will tell you, I don't know the exact number, but they've increased more than 3.4% since we've adjusted this. So we're still not really capturing what it's costing us to dump our trash. And on a related note, I want to point out to all our citizens that all of our household garbage goes to the incinerator. Our garbage does not go to the landfill. And we pay a higher rate to dump at the incinerator than we would at the landfill. However, we'd have to drive our trucks further to the landfill, so it kind of offsets. And it's also more environmentally sound to dump our garbage at the incinerator. So just to dispel any misunderstandings, this has nothing to do with the transition over to the new trash collection system. So, any other comments, council members? Okay, if not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
No nays. The motion passes. Very good. Next item is a second public hearing and reading adopting ordinances approving the fiscal year 2021 tax levy and budget. I'll open the public hearing, and Assistant Finance Director Jim Ingram will explain. Welcome, Mr. Ingram.
Good evening, Mayor Ross.
Good evening, sir.
City Council. In accordance with the applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes, the city council scheduled two public hearings on the property tax millage levy. The first hearing was held on September 3rd, 2020. The city council solicited public comment on the proposed property tax millage levy. At the first hearing, the city council approved by unanimous vote a tentative property tax millage rate of 6.555 per $1,000 of assessed value, the same as the current and the previous fiscal year. The tentative property tax millage of 6.555 is 5.745 mils or 9.61% higher than the rollback rate of 5.9805. Now, we had a question last time about, or a request to explain what the rollback rate is. The rollback rate is simply the tax rate that would generate the same amount of property tax revenues as approved last year for this current fiscal year. So to make it simple, if we use the tax rate of 5.9805 this year, the rollback rate, we would get the same tax revenue that we have this year. Because the property assessment, our property values have gone up, the rollback rate is lower than that 6.55 that we are currently using and are proposing to, again, use for this fiscal year. The rate of 6.55 requires at least two-thirds vote of council to approve adoption per the maximum millage levy calculation established by the state of Florida. The city must adopt the millage rate and budget by separate votes at this hearing. The millage rate must be adopted before the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget. The 9.61 percentage increase in millage over the rollback rate needed to fund the budget is due to the following. Anticipated decreases in intergovernmental revenues due to the effect of the COVID crisis, an increase in operating and personnel costs, as is usual, and an increase in general fund capital expense due to a decrease in CIT funds. And that relates back to the first point about the intergovernmental revenue. We're getting less community investment tax revenue, and we're able to spend a lot less this year with CIT funds, so we're spending more in general fund for capital expenses. And just another point about the, on the rollback rate issue. With the 6.55% staying the same and with the increase in our tax values, that will generate about $1 million more in tax revenue for us. Again, the reason is, the reason or the purpose for that increase is the points I just mentioned. Staff recommends that council take action to adopt ordinance 1497, approving the ad valorem tax rate for the upcoming fiscal year. Any questions?
Very good. Prior to questions, Mr. Ingram, is there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Any members of the public? Seeing none, council member questions? Okay, very good. See no questions, I'll ask the clerk to read the title of ordinance 1497, please.
In ordinance of the, in ordinance of-
Hold on a second, Ms. Moody. Mrs. Donahue, you're still able to hear everything?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great, okay, proceed.
No problem, thank you.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, adopting a millage rate of 6.555 zero mils for fiscal year 2020 through 2021, said millage rate being 0.5745 mils or 9.61% more than the rollback rate of 5.9805 mils, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Very good. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 1497 establishing the millage rate?
Motion to adopt ordinance 1497.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, we'll take a roll call vote on the motion. Mrs. Donahue, we'll start with you.
I say yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Do not close the public hearing, okay? I won't. Next item is a second public hearing and reading of adopting ordinances approving the fiscal year 2021 tax levy and budget. Second hearing and reading of ordinance 1498, adopting the fiscal year 2021 annual budget. Finance Director Lynn Boswell, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ross and members of City Council. In accordance with the applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes, this is the second public hearing that is, that was scheduled from the first one, September 3rd, at 6:00 PM, to solicit public comment on the annual budget for the upcoming 2020, 2021 fiscal year. Notice of the public hearing was initially provided to all property owners and the truth and millage notices provided by the property appraiser's office in mid-August. The recommended budget was presented to the city council in a series of budget workshops to review and solicit adjustments to the allocations of the budget documents. The total city fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget amounts to $66,575,315. I need to go ahead and read into the record a brief on the budget summary that was attached illustrating the total budget for the upcoming fiscal year. The proposed 2021 budget reflects the following. No increase in the ad valorem tax rate to 2.6, to 6.555 mils from current year of 6.555. A 3.4% increase in commercial sanitation rates, a 3.4% increase in single-family residential sanitation rates. Also, the total of $7,220,107 of capital items, of which are highlighted, $979,786 in general fund capital programs, $912,321 in community investment tax fund expenditures to include replacing public safety vehicles and equipment, building improvements for fire stations 1 and 2, pool deck resurfacing at the family complex, and the replacement of the Ridgedale complex restroom. $1,771,500 in utility system improvements and vehicle replacements, $297,000 to purchase residential carts and containers, and $1,205,000 in street sidewalk, bicycle trail, and drainage improvements. In accordance with the applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes, the city council has scheduled tonight the second of the public hearing on the fiscal year 2020, 2021 annual budget. Staff recommends that city council solicit public comment on this proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021 annual budget, and then take action to approve this attached ordinance. Any questions?
Need a breath after that.
As I'm taking this mask off.
Very good. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, any questions for Ms. Boswell? Okay. If not, I'll close the public hearing and ask the city clerk to read the title of ordinance 1498.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, adopting the final operating budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021, and the capital improvement budget, giving notice of the public errands thereon, authorizing the city manager to issue such instructions as are necessary to achieve and accomplish the service programs, authorizing the city manager or the finance director to transfer monies among the departments and programs within any fund, authorizing the city manager or the finance director upon receipt of a donation or grant to appropriate said funds in the expenditure line item of the program as requested by the donor-grantor, providing a severability clause, effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Is there a motion to accept ordinance 1498 and adopt the 2021 budget?
Motion to adopt ordinance 1498 establishing the 2021 fiscal budget.
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any comments on the motion? I would like to say one thing for the, for the public who's viewing. We have, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Stevenson, Ms. Boswell, Mr. Ingram, and all the directors. This is a very good budget. It was very well done, it's very smart, there are no gold faucets in this, and I will tell you that this is not, we're not in the same place that we were in five years ago. We have fixed many of the problems, thanks to Mr. Stevenson and his staff. We have improved our infrastructure, we have renovated the rec center, we have built sidewalks, we've fixed utilities, we have fixed pay compression issues, we have stopped the drain of valued employees to other entities. We have fixed, and there's credit go around, this is Mr. Stevenson, the directors, and also the members who have sat on this dais, who have rolled up their sleeves and really worked hard on these budgets for the past few years. So, ladies and gentlemen, we're good. We're not rich, we're not wealthy, we're not Palm Springs, but we're healthy. And I say that this year because we're entering next year into a season of uncertainty, and I hope that next year we're able to do this as smoothly as this year, but I'm very concerned about that. So, thank you again to all of you who made this possible. Okay, any other council comments? We need a roll call vote. Mrs. Donahue, we will start with you.
I say yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous, the ordinance 1498 is passed, we have a budget. Next item is a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County concerning the acceptance and expenditure of coronavirus emergency supplemental funding awarded to the city. Deputy Police Chief Bernie Sealy will explain. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Stevenson. Proud to announce that the city of Temple Terrace has been awarded a non-matching reimbursement grant in the amount of $3,434.10 from the Bureau of Justice Administration, fiscal year 2020 coronavirus emergency supplemental funding from the Department of Justice. With your approval, the police department intends to use these grant funds to purchase two intercom systems for the third-floor lobby police administration reception windows, and a third intercom system for the first-floor police records window. The intercom systems will replace makeshift barrier screens on the third-floor reception windows and a open hole cut in the glass on the first-floor records window. Once installed, these intercom systems will provide our employees with better protection from airborne contaminants while at the same time enhancing our ability to communicate effectively at these locations. Staff recommends the approval of the interlocal agreement and the purchase of these systems in accordance with established purchasing guidelines. If approved, this expenditure will be made from account number 001141521.42. I stand for questions.
Very good. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member questions? Okay, very good. Is there a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County concerning the acceptance of these funds?
Move to approve.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any comments, discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue? We have a quorum without her vote, right? Is that correct? Okay.
Can you not hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now. Did you have a vote on this item?
Yes, I did, and I said aye.
Okay, very good. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item is a resolution approving the city of Temple Terrace's 2021 SRTAX project plan. Public Works Director of Utilities Troy Tinch will explain. Welcome, Mr. Tinch, how are you?
I'm good.
Good.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Troy Tinch, Public Works Utilities Director. I'm here this evening to seek approval of the adoption of the 2021 transportation SRTAX plan. As you will recall, I brought the plan initially to you in a draft form back in August. You all had an opportunity to review that plan. We then met again on the 3rd, discussed it in greater detail, kind of more of a formal presentation, asked if you wanted to have any changes made to that plan at that time. You instructed me to move forward with the plan as it stands, so I did that. Currently, the plan has five projects identified in it, three transportation, resurfacing projects in the southern, central, and northern parts of the city, and in addition, it has a couple of smaller projects, a bridge rehab plan by Riverside Park, and money for the design of a small trail up in the telecom area to connect the city to Lettuce Lake. Just a couple of things I did want to note. First of all, again, the 2021 plan as it stands, we do have the opportunity to make changes to this plan. It would just simply be me bringing a project to you or you bringing a project to us. Approving it, I would take it to the IOC, the IOC would then approve it, and it would be entered into the plan. So we can change this plan, it's not set in stone. The other is the more obvious, and probably the more daunting, and that is the litigation factor. I think we're all aware that the SRTAX is currently under litigation, basically has been since its inception. We're still waiting on official word on that litigation, but the IOC, the committee that drives this, felt it important that we go ahead and have this plan in place in the event that there is a favorable ruling and that the SRTAX does stay in place, so we could then move forward spending that money. So, we have the 2020 plan, it's already in place, this will be for the county year 2021, so we'll have everything ready to go if they give us the green light to start implementing projects in that timeframe. So that said, staff recommends the city council approve a resolution to adopt a 2021 transportation SRTAX plan as presented. I will stand for questions if any.
Good. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member questions?
I have one more question, and I think I talked about this last time. What is the cumulative total amount for the, all the projects for 2020 and 2021?
We, right now, we have about $3.9 million, I believe, in our coffers, and so that money would be available to spend. We also have a, an estimate for revenue for '21 of about $2 million. We estimated slightly above that on our projects because we want to make sure we spend every penny, and understanding that what is in the plan is OPC's opinion of probable cost or engineering estimates, so we went a little off that $2 million mark to about $2.1 million. In the event that we are able to get some of these projects done a little bit cheaper, we want to make sure we spend every penny that we get. we want to make sure we spend every penny that we get. So, right now, about 3.9 million, I believe, in, in our coffers.
But assuming we don't have to give everything back, we can still accomplish all the projects in the list.
That is correct.
Other council member questions? Good. If not, is there a motion to approve the city of Temple Terrace's 2021 SRTAX project plan?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Good. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Tinch.
Thank you.
Next item is carryover council business. Is there any carryover council business from previous meetings? Good. New business in board reports. Mrs. Donahue, do you have anything to report?
Uh, no, I do not. Thank you.
Any new business? Okay. Mr. Chambers?
Yeah, I, I have a board report, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm the city's rep on the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, and as a, a review of that, it's a 42-member organization from around the Tampa Bay area, the six counties, many cities, and some governor appointments. A couple of months ago, they created a six-person committee to study the effects of COVID-19 on the Bay Area, mostly economic. I'm on that committee, and we've had two meetings. In yesterday's meeting, we were presented with a report that I just showed some of the economic areas, tourism, retail, in our, in the Tampa Bay region. And it's a very good report, and so I'm going to ask the city clerk, I'll send it to the clerk tomorrow and have it sent to council.
Good.
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Sisler, I think you had something?
Yeah, I just had a very brief heart report. We had a four-hour marathon session last night of reading the first public hearing for the budget, but there is something that is coming down the pike, and that is the, Hart is moving into autonomous vehicles. So, if anybody, unfortunately, I don't have a very good picture of it, but I'll leave it up here. The autonomous vehicle is learning how to drive now, and it'll be running around downtown. And there is a, was supposed to be a ribbon cutting for it on Friday, but it got canceled. I'm not sure why it got canceled. I don't know. It was, it was supposed to be a meeting with the police department today, and something gets canceled. I'm not saying it's related, but I, I have, I have not heard nor have I checked into why it was, why it was done. So, if you see a little, they call it a beep, B-E-E-P, and also an AV autonomous vehicle. You see they're running around downtown. It's not coming from our money, it's coming from FDOT, but they're, they're really pushing the, the entire concept for down, down in, in, in the center part of town. They're still working on the arterial project, which will come up Florida and Nebraska Avenue, and then cut around to, to the Mosey area, USF area for, you know, rapid transit back and forth through downtown to the USF, kind of sort of linking everything together. And that's about it for right now.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a, just a brief update, the, the property appraiser, Hillsborough County Property Appraiser, Bob Henrique, has convened a task force earlier this summer to discuss ways to mitigate the upcoming impact on tax revenue, both for the taxpayers and for the, the governments who rely on those revenue streams. We've had two meetings so far. Most of the discussion, there's been no decision, but most of the discussion, just FYI for the public, has focused on tax deferrals, right, enabling people to pay taxes late if necessary, if they have justifiable reason to pay their taxes late and avoid penalties and delinquent fees. There's discussion of payment plans, perhaps, so that people can pay their taxes and installments. Most of the discussion has been around those types of things. This is part of a bigger discussion that's taking place among the property appraisers across the state. In fact, there were several property appraisers from other counties, other places in, in this meeting. This is part of a statewide effort. The, it's almost certain that the legislature will take this issue up when they convene, and there will, some of these requirements would require legislative action anyway. They're not something that we can do on a local level. With the property appraisers, to their credit, what they're trying to do is to brainstorm this stuff so that they can put some viable options in front of the legislator, legislators to give them some reasonable framework to, to go with. There's also some efforts being made by an organization called Florida Tax Watch, which many of you have heard of. The property appraisers, again, to their credit, they are trying to work with Tax Watch as opposed to, on opposite sides of this, to see if there's some middle ground that can be established so that when these ideas are put to the legislature, they have the consensus of the, the property appraisers collectively and Florida Tax Watch. So, that's kind of the effort that's underway. As I said, far from any decisions, a lot of discussion, but most of it is focused on tax relief. Everybody seems to agree, as we've discussed several times up here, next year, perhaps the year after that, could be a challenge for all of us, so, both as taxpayers and as, as a city. So, we'll see where that goes. All right, city managers report. Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple, couple things of note here. I'm going to ask Mr. Langfield with our leisure services department to come up and explain what we're doing with Senior Expo this year. They've come up with a, an alternative to what we normally do, so we'll let him explain what they're doing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Senior Expo is next Friday, September 25th, from 9:00 AM to noon, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to invite you and members of the public to come to the Lightfoot Center between 9:00 AM and noon for a drive-through version of the 31st Annual Senior Expo, where we will be providing, and I left it over here. Goodie bags full of valuable information and products available to seniors from local agencies throughout the area, as well as we have had custom masks made that will be handed out. They can either be a Lightfoot Masketeer or a Temple Terrace mascot. And I want to thank my staff and Lori Hayes for their efforts on getting these masks together for the Senior Expo. I do want to thank a few folks for their efforts in making, making this Senior Expo happen. Humana, Promise Point Senior Living, PT Solutions, Life Path Hospice, Mary Kay, we're all sponsors for this year's event. And then companies providing door prizes include AARP, devoted health plans, Heart, Senior Directory of Tampa Bay, Excel Care Centers, Family Hearing Center, as well as others. It's going to be a very different Senior Expo that we've had in the past, but again, doing our best to engage our senior population during this time and, and provide them an opportunity to get out, get some information, play some in-car games that they can do that we have planned for them, and a few other surprises that we're going to have out there next Friday, the 25th, from 9:00 afternoon at the Lightfoot Center. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Langfield.
Thank you, Carl. One, a couple of other things, Mr. Mayor. Staff is currently in the process of planning our candidate forum for this year. We are putting the final touches on that agenda, if you would. We'll be sharing that with council here before the end of the week, just to kind of let everybody know what we're anticipating. Obviously, it will be a little bit different this year than, you know, a couple of years ago, we opened up the community to Lightfoot and had quite a crowd. Obviously, we can't do that this year, so we're having to, once again, be a little creative, but I think we can put a good program together and get the message out there for all these three candidates. So, we'll be sharing that with you, with council here before the end of the week. And just something of note, and I know this is way in advance, election day is November 3rd. Just to remind you guys, clear your calendar, because our meeting will be on the 2nd. Okay? November 2nd instead of November 3rd. We'll be holding city council meeting on Monday and not Tuesday.
Tell me again what, that's for the employee luncheon, is that what?
I'm sorry.
What, what's the reason for the?
The election. November 3rd.
Oh, the ele, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
I get.
So, typically, we hold it the Monday before. So, again, I just want to make sure that, that's very unusual for us to hold a meeting on a Monday, so just make sure that everybody clears their calendar and go out and vote on the 3rd. So, that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Sisler?
I have a question. Looking at your last report, it said, and I'm, I'm trying to go from memory if there was your, your tentative agendas called for the swearing-in of the new council member, the second meeting in November?
That's correct.
I think you might want to check with the charter, the, the review from the charter. I think that we made a change to that as part of the, the, the charter, the charter change because there was, there was a potential of there being an overlap with the certification of the results from the canvassing board and being able to do this. I think you're meeting ahead in that tentative, and I just thought of it a couple of minutes ago.
Miss Mooney has some information to share.
Oh, okay.
I believe the change was the second meeting after certification of the election results.
Yes.
And they usually have them pretty quickly, so it should be the second meeting after the election.
It's usually, I think, about 10 days that we give them to do that. So, we may be okay on the 17th. I think that was the date of the second meeting.
But that's the second meeting.
Second meeting after the.
So, it won't be till December.
It's the second meeting of the month.
Second, no, second meeting after the election.
Yeah, we'll.
And the election would be on the, for the meet, first meeting would be on the, the second, 3rd would be the election day, second meeting after the election would be the first meeting in December.
We'll, we'll check into that.
Just, I just, I didn't want us to make a mistake on that.
We'll make sure that, we'll make sure that we're in compliance with the new.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Stevenson?
No, sir. I'm good. Thank you.
City attorneys report?
The legal department has been working with the police department to do some collections work. There were, the city and the police department expend money to certain individuals with regard to training them to be police officers. Contracts are signed at that time, and the money is supposed to be reimbursed. We had three individuals with three contracts that some of them had started to reimburse and then didn't, some never did, and so we, we attempted some friendly methods of collection first to persuade them to meet their obligations under the contract. One was successful, and we collected the second, the other two, we initiated lawsuits against them. We settled one. We collected the money today. The check came in. That included a reimbursement of the filing fee from the legal department that we paid in order to file the suit, so we got that back. And the third one is scheduled for mediation, which is required by the court at the end of next month. So, so far, we've got two out of three, and we're hoping that we'll be able to settle the other one at mediation. If not, then we'll have a trial, so.
Very good. Thank you. Good work. Mr. Sisler?
Could we get an update on the proposed ord, this, the ordinance for the EPG for the city, the, the emergency planning?
That one, I'm, I'm still hoping to, I, I believe that the fire department, the fire chief is still working with the county on that.
Okay.
Until, until they have a firm plan with the county, we won't have ours to present to you. We'd want to be able to incorporate that into the ordinance that we present to council.
Okay. Thank you.
When is there, do they have a target date?
I don't know.
I, I don't know that they do just yet. We have, we have a series of meetings scheduled here in September. There's four different meeting dates in September that they're asking to get with department directors, city managers, so that they can interview everybody's section of the CEMP.
Who, who is the county EOC?
No, 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 no. This is through, Fire Chief Kemp is working with this organization to do this, and again, they've requested four dates in September to do this, so obviously, it will run through this month at least.
I was just, it's a lot of storms out there, and I just, I'd rather be prepared than to be sitting here trying to figure what we're going to do in, in a pinch, and if we can move this along in any way, shape, or form, like, like it being settled. That's all.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get with you, because I'm, if, if it's the county that's holding us up.
We, we have a plan that we have used in the past. I was wanting to tweak the powers that this council has because of some gaps that we saw in our charter and our, in our ordinance, but I don't see that we're going to have some major problem if we just proceed under the plan that we've been proceeding under in the past.
Okay. I just want to, I don't, I don't want to take a dig at the county commission, but I don't want the county holding us up.
Yeah.
Because they're the ones that cast us out to begin with and caused us to have to do this. I don't think it's reasonable that we wait on the county if that's the holdup, but I guess.
It, it is not my understanding that the county is holding us up.
Okay. All right. Very good. Is there other business to come before the council? Mrs. Donahue, do you have anything? Take that as a no.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, very good. If there's no other business to come before the council.
Can you hear me?
Good.
Thank you, sir.